All right, I'd like to, well, we're resuming this meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education. Do we need to call the roll again? No? Yep. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Myers? I see Myers on the call. Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zuss.
Here.
Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as.
Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. Do I have a second? Second. By Kitty. Laura, could you please call the vote on the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers. Myers? Myers?
Okay.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zuss.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Goodbye.
Okay. All right, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Thank you all for joining us this evening for our, hopefully, last board meeting of this academic calendar, so that we can all relax over the summer after what was a pretty eventful year. And I just wanted to again extend my thanks to the staff, the superintendent, all of our teachers, and our wonderfully patient families, and our resilient students for helping us navigate this year. It was certainly an unusual year with a lot of challenges, and I'm proud of how our district and our community came together to help move us forward and come to this place today. So, we all deserve a big break, I think. And the other piece I just wanted to remind people, if they have forgotten, we do have school board elections coming up. So you'll want to pick up your petitions with the Board Secretary Laura Schaefer around the first week of August and have those back with 50 signatures, preferably 75, by the end of August. And that will be the timeline if you want to be a candidate in the school board election. The election will happen the first Tuesday in November, as usual. So please consider it. It's great work. It's fulfilling, and your contributions will be valued. So we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Thank you, Board President Marquess, members of the board. I'd like to join Tina in just thanking our community. What a long but very successful school year, lots of, I think, things that we have learned, and hope everybody-
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue.
Hope everybody is enjoying the warmer weather and summer. Board members, this past two weeks, I'm excited to say that we kicked off our-
You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak. This meeting is being recorded.
So I-
So just remember, Rob, we're going to try to have a learning stance with everything, including Zoom, so just keep learning.
That's right. Well, it's been an adventure, for sure. I just, so, this past two weeks, we kicked off our first-ever Leadership Academy for principals and assistant principals. Our team did an excellent job of creating content, and I actually presented yesterday for a couple of hours on some of the ways that we can work together with one another to lead and to be successful in BVSD. As a reminder, this is part of Strategic Initiative 1C. We did some technical training, leadership development, and got really great feedback from our leaders. This will be an annual event, a great time to really reflect on our opportunities for improvement and our successes as leaders in the district. So I just wanted to thank all of our leaders for giving us time over the past two weeks to be able to work with them on that. I want to, for those that weren't tuned into our special work session, I just want to again thank our Youth Equity Council and our Equity Council for the recommendations that they've made. Both groups have given us a great deal of time. Both groups have given us excellent direction. We look forward to implementing many of these recommendations and moving forward. And just, I'm just so encouraged by the power of working together and listening, and empowering those in our community to help us as a governance team to do great work. And then finally, board members, and I know she doesn't know I'm going to say anything, but Terry Mulford, outgoing BVEA president, is here with us today. This is the last meeting she'll be at. I just am so thankful for Terry's leadership. We came in at the very same time. She's been an incredible partner. The partnership that we have with our Teachers Association is so incredibly special. I think that folks that have been here for a while or may take that for granted, we are true partners in the work. Not that we always agree, because, you know, when you're partnering together sometimes, you know, you have tough conversations. Terry was always there, loves this school district. We're so excited that Patty is our incoming BVEA president, but Terry, I am going to miss you, and so thank you for being here. I just wanted to say that publicly, and that's all I have for my comments.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Anderson? No? Okay, so we'll move on to our next item, which is public participation. So again, we're continuing public participation as virtual through the remainder of this year, which is hopefully tonight. And hopefully, we'll be back in person in August when we have our first meeting of the new academic calendar, sometime around August 9th, I think. So if you wanted to speak, you would have signed up prior to noon today by communicating with Laura. So we recognize the value of public comment, and we ask you to confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. We also ask you to limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go, I'm sorry, if you run out of time, or you'd like to share additional information, please email the board. We do read all of our emails. And also recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. So you will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining of your speech. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. Laura's going to be holding those. And at that time, please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. All right, so, our first speaker is a student speaker, Dorian Lancaster.
Hi, my name is Dorian Lancaster, and I am a sixth-grade BVSD student. Teachers should be required to be trained in understanding and teaching about Black and Indigenous cultures. The training should happen at the beginning and end of each school year. The training should be done by Black and Indigenous professional trainers. I have Black and Indigenous roots, and I am proud to say this. I've had many encounters with teachers in BVSD since I was in second grade who are biased or racist and not understanding of my culture. This school year, my class had to choose a European explorer to act as and write journal entries from their point of view. The explorers were colonizers and killed those who stood in their way of spreading the three Gs. I chose to be Vasco de Gama and learned that while he found a new route to India from Portugal, he stopped in many West African countries to pick up enslaved people and killed many people from Africa and India. Doing this made me feel disappointed and upset, because why would I want to act as someone who killed my ancestors? In another subject, students were given a colonial role to be and learn about. I was a Native American. I was supposed to write a persuasive letter to King George saying if I was going to be loyal to Great Britain or break free. I felt dumbfounded by this, because why would Indigenous people be loyal to Great Britain or helpful to colonists? The last assignment that I will be talking about is the pro-slavery versus anti-slavery essay. I didn't complete my work on this assignment, because I did not feel good about it, because there is nothing good about slavery. Me, as a Black person, should not be reading about why slavery was good. No one should be writing about how slavery was good. I want teachers to be in training so that they can understand why these assignments are unacceptable and racist, and so they don't make the same choice of assignments in the future. They should teach unwhitewashed history. Thank you for hearing my powerful Black voice.
Okay, Chris Nelson.
Hello. Good evening. I have two teenagers at Broomfield High School, both whom are fully vaccinated. I say this so you know I speak for many other families' benefit, not my own. As is usual, Boulder County Public Health continues to have more restrictive guidelines than CDPHD, despite having the seventh-highest vaccination rate in the state. Broomfield currently ranks fifth. Boulder's mask policy has not been updated despite the state's update on May 31st. With that update, which Broomfield County follows, fully vaccinated persons and kids under 12 no longer need to mask inside school buildings. Even with Boulder's current and more restrictive policy, masks are not required inside a school for children under 10 for the paragraph four exemption of Public Health Order 2021-06. Masks are also not required in any outdoor setting. Please explain, then, why is a six-year-old required to wear a mask in summer school? Why is a parent volunteer, who is fully vaccinated, told she must mask outside of her child's school? BVSD needs to put an end to these inconsistencies immediately. Superintendent Wise of Douglas County has done the right thing for the 2021-22 school year. He has already announced that schools will be fully opened, and all Douglas County kids can expect a completely normal school year, regardless of vaccination status. This includes no masks, no quarantines, no physical distancing, and all athletics and activities will be as usual. To the board, you were elected to serve the children in this district, but you turned all pandemic-related power over to Dr. Anderson. This full decision-making power that was granted one year ago needs to be rescinded immediately. The county is in low-oil clear, the state of Colorado is fully open, yet the double standards applied to children continue. There cannot be rules that subject children to stigmatization and segregation based on vaccination status or age. Perhaps you missed the mental health emergency declared a few weeks ago by Children's Hospital. It is time for BVSD to make up for the last school year and move on to facilitating recovery for all kids. It is time to make an announcement that all kids will have a fully normal school year in the fall. Thank you.
Amy Shirk.
Hi there. I'd like to comment on the continuance of masking despite the CDC and CDPHD updated guidelines. I have heard that BVSD has adopted a similar, albeit slightly more restrictive, policy per Boulder County Health recommendations, but the information is difficult to find, and it's certainly not being communicated nor practiced by any BVSD school. In fact, until a couple days ago, it was my understanding that mask mandates were still 100% in place for BVSD. I want you to know as a board that your decisions have real-world consequences for families and children. For example, my recent graduate didn't gain anything during COVID, as suggested at graduation. What she did learn is that the people who were supposed to have her best interest in mind were too risk averse to make decisions based on science. That's her conclusion, not mine. My nine-year-old is in therapy due to severe anxiety, and my six-year-old, her eye-ready score has decreased by 70 points in 10 months. We are one family. As you know, the leading cause of death in Colorado for kids aged 10 and older is not COVID, but it's suicide. I have a degree in chemistry, and I rely on the data to make decisions, and the data is now clear. It is time for our children to get back to normal. The Denver Broncos will be allowed to host games at maximum capacity, 70,000-plus spectators. But my six-year-old, I am that parent, will be attending summer school and will still need to be masked. Vaccinated parents are required to wear masks outside during field day, and vaccinated volleyball players are required to wear masks inside during open gyms. This inconsistency is staggering. It feels risky to unwind from the restrictions of the last year. The recommendations, however, point to this appropriate rollback. The messaging, however, has been a disaster. If indeed BVSD is no longer requiring masks indoors for those 10 and under, why hasn't this clearly been communicated to the parents in the community? Why are individuals-
Okay, our next speaker is Kristin Judd.
Hi there. Stop abusing our children, no matter the age, by making them wear masks. I'm a mother. I'm a business owner, but I am not a scientist. But what I do have is mother's intuition. I have known in my heart of hearts and my gut of guts that this mask thing was wrong on so many levels. I didn't have the documentation or the background to back this up, but I've spent the last year giving hundreds of hours researching and learning so that I can protect and keep my family safe. Children's Hospital has just issued a state of emergency right now. The number-one killer of our kids 10 and older is suicide. Attempted suicide is the top reason for emergency visits right now. We need to do better, be better at anticipating and listening to what's going on. Use our own critical thinking skills to keep our children safe. A CDC deputy director resigned after it was found out about emails between them and a teachers' union to keep things shut down. Even when you look at the statistics of the so-called pandemic, the math of the data does not support the abuse we are inflicting on our children. Yes, I like math. It cannot be manipulated the way clearly science has been done over the last year. But more importantly than that, we now have 3,200 pages of Fauci emails proving he lied about everything. He lied about the masks. He lied about the pandemic. He lied about the treatment for COVID. He lied about asymptomatic spread. He lied about everything. So it seems to me it would be incredibly foolish to keep following some clearly very outdated information, all in the name of safety. We cannot be okay with this idea that a 300% increase in suicides is okay. We have treated wearing masks as if it were an absolute, and there are no absolutes. There is only balance, good and bad, in everything we do and every situation. Stop abusing our kids and our faculty by making them wear masks. I have sent plenty of documentation to Donna, and I'm happy to share it with all of you.
Okay, and our last speaker is Stephanie Smith. Is Stephanie there?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so, hello, my name is Stephanie Smith, and I am here representing Boulder Valley Girls' Softball Association, BBGSA. And my intent was to bring my entire 18-and-under team in front of the board so they could speak to you and they could advocate for themselves and for their sport. But due to COVID, that's not possible, but they are here to support me as I speak to you guys. I'm coming to the board today to request that Boulder Valley School District grant Boulder Valley Girls' Softball Association weekend and weeknight access to the following fields: Fairview High, Boulder High, Horizon, Centennial, and Eisenhower. The reason we are bringing this issue to the board is because over the last 15 years, our calls to request access to these fields, these safe and playable softball fields in Boulder have fallen on deaf ears, and the problem has only increased. BBGSA has offered recreational softball opportunities for girls throughout Boulder County for over 40 years. Our goal is to provide a place where girls are able, of all abilities and all income levels, can play softball and learn the game in a non-competitive, supportive, and safe environment. This past summer, BBGSA sponsored 13 teams out of Boulder, serving 200 girls. We expect to have 18 teams serving over 300 girls this fall. Before COVID hit, BBGSA paid BVSD for field use close to $13,000. However, this year, we will only be paying close to $7,000 because of limited field access. We view this concern as a three-prong equity issue. There is not equal access to the ball fields between boys' baseball and girls' softball. There are limited opportunities for low-income girls to play softball in Boulder County, and there are limited opportunities to introduce girls from minority communities to the sport of softball. North Boulder Little League and South Boulder Little League teams have consumed nearly all the fields, and we ask that Boulder Valley look at that as a Title IX issue and make the field access equitable. I did email everybody in the board with a plea of that.
Okay, that concludes public participation, and now it's time for board communication. Who would like to go first? Kathy.
I'd like to follow what Rob said and thank Terry for her service. I think she's retiring, so we won't even get to see her, like, in the district. So, best of luck with retirement, and thanks for your service through very stressful and trying times. And then it occurred to me that we also have one more stellar employee who won't be with us after tonight. I'm going to get a little choked up here, and that's Margaret Crespo. And just knowing when she would present stuff to us, that it was going to be accurate, and she'd answer every question, no matter how ridiculous it was. She was always prepared, and Blair Mee is going to be so lucky to have you. And I personally am going to really miss you, but I wish you all the best, and thank you for getting us through the pandemic, and thank you for everything you've done for us. I really, really appreciate you. Thank you. Then I have just a couple more things. Tonight, we had an intro to the board library. Who knew we had such a thing? And I want the public to know that what we have in there is, and I probably get this wrong, so Rob, you may have to correct me, but it's at least an exemplar of a lot of the materials that we have in our schools. And so it's a place for the public, if they have a question about kind of what we're offering in the schools, and there's computers in there, so you can see what our online offerings are. And it's a great way for us to start to be even more transparent in what we're offering in our curriculum. I was told that before we put it into our library, it was in cold storage, and I don't even know where that is. On a day like today, that sounded kind of nice, but anyway. It's a nice space for people to go and kind of see what we're doing with our curriculum and to ask questions. And so I just want to say thank you for setting that up and letting people know that we have that as an option available for them. Then on last Friday, Rob gave a stellar presentation to a group called the Colorado School Finance Project. And the questions were, you know, what is Boulder Valley School District doing to try to get ahead of the money that's coming in from the federal government? What are we doing and thinking about how we're going to spend that money? What kind of systemic changes are we going to make? And Rob and David Blackburn from Salida were the two guest speakers, and Rob did a phenomenal job. And what I can tell you is, when you're kind of in the Boulder bubble, you feel like, well, maybe we're not doing that much, or maybe we should be doing more. And the feedback I got from superintendents and others who attended the meeting was, we are light-years ahead of where others are. So it's nice that we can kind of help lead that conversation about what we should be thinking and doing with this once-in-a-generation kind of opportunities that the federal government's giving us. So thank you, Rob, for doing that, because I do worry that if we aren't strategic and we don't plan enough for how we're going to spend this money in a systemic way, we're going to be accused of doing the same old thing, and when it comes time when the federal money runs out, no one's going to want to support public education anymore, at least not financially. So thank you very much for that presentation. Then, there was a letter to the editor, a couple letters to the editor about a recent, they didn't frame it this way, but it's because of a recent Supreme Court decision that allows districts that have already debruised to raise their mills. And the way the press spun it was without a vote of the people. And I just want, as I was thinking about, there's probably five people in the district besides those in this room who have paid attention to this, but I want people to know, we are not raising taxes without a vote of the people. This was a vote that I had Bill pull the data for me, and we voted, it's called a debruising measure, in 1999. Now, that may seem like a long time ago, and it was, but the Supreme Court has said that for those districts, and they're all the districts in the state of Colorado now, except for maybe one or two, because some recently debruised, are able to keep all the revenue that comes in. And so what happened was, CDE threw a mistaken, who knows, injunction or just an error that they made. They were lowering our mills, and now we are going to be raising them back up to a level close to what they were at the time. Our mills at that time were 32. We're only going to get to 27, because there is a statutory cap on 27. And this isn't something we have any say over. The Department of Education tells us what our mills are. And so for the next two years, this next year, our mill will be raised one, and the next year, it'll be raised almost one. And so I also asked Bill to tell me kind of what that would mean to the individual taxpayer. And so, if you have a, for a $100,000 house, and I know there probably are no such things in Boulder County, but to make the math easier, your property taxes, if, when we raise it one mill, will go up $7.15 for the year. So do that by the, that's all your, your taxes will go up in a residential property. For commercial, it's $290. And so the max that will go up is one mill this year, and then the partial mill next year. And the other thing you need to know is, that doesn't mean that money, even though it's raised locally, means that we will be necessarily getting that money to do additional programming with. It goes through the school finance formula, so we will get a little bit of money, but not a whole lot of money. So I just want people to understand, that's not us raising taxes without a vote, and that the increases, our property taxes in Colorado on residential are very low compared to what they are across the country. And I know with the huge increases in assessed value that we're all seeing when we get our property tax bills, it doesn't feel like that, but they really are not that high compared to other states. So if there are other questions, feel free to reach out to us, but I don't want people to get a lot of anxiety that we're doing something that we weren't allowed to do and that we're somehow trying to pull a fast one by raising property taxes. So, I'm trying to think, let me look at my notes. I think, and I want to thank the speakers that came today. I really appreciate the student speakers who came. As Rob said earlier today, we had our Student Equity Council, and we had five very brave students come and talk to us and talk to us, tell us things that are very hard for us to hear about their experiences in school. And what we were asked to do is to continue to be open-minded and to listen to our students and to listen to their stories and to listen to their lived experiences. So I just want to say thanks to them and to the Equity Council, the, I think you called it the Adult Equity Council, the recommendations that they made, because they put a lot of time and effort in during a pandemic to try to help us get on a better path for our equity work. So I want to say thank you to them, and thank you to the students who came forward. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, and before I forget, Donna, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I have my hand raised. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just so you know, I can't always see the hand from the Zoom screen, so you can also just pop a text to Laura, okay?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I do appreciate the speakers. Thank you, Dorian, for stepping up and letting us know what, how you experienced some of the inequities in our, in our whole system, and I feel that we're on the way to progress and we're changing that. And I'm going to go off on a tangent here and say, I'll miss you, Terry, for, you've provided excellent leadership for BVEA. But I want to add on to Kathy's point that we may see you again. Remember, I retired too, and here I am on the board, and there's openings. You could run. And I want to go on and talk about an email that came in from Deb and Jessica about how these extra dollars are going to be spent, and hopefully, we will spend them equitably and consider how special education students will get some of those extra dollars that will flow into our district during this time. And I want to speak to, I appreciate Kathy bringing up the tax dollars, because I heard from a lot of people that they're concerned about not having a say. And I do think that when you think, it doesn't sound like much, $7 per $100,000 on a house, but you can't buy a house for $100,000. You can't buy a condo for $100,000. So every dollar counts in today's economy, as we see gas prices going up, and I know that as we see different things within our school budget that we're about to approve, or we're going to decide on tonight, these budget things that come up, they impact our classrooms as well as our parents on what we can offer the kiddos. So that's something that we need to consider as this amount of money hits us. Then I want to also thank Chris and Amy and Kristin for coming forward about the mask. I hear you. I hear you loud and clear. You know all the flack I got on bringing forward my motion, and my other board members know that through emails. A lot of the board members didn't see the personal emails I got, the ones of thank you. But I also heard from several of our staff members that called me personally or emailed me to let me know that they supported me and that they wanted to see some change in our mask policy, and maybe Rob will address that tonight on what we're requiring in summer school. But many of these teachers and staff members, what concerned me is they said, Donna, please, don't mention my name for fear of retribution. I don't think anybody in our district should have to fear retribution, because they're speaking out about their passion. And I hope that in the fall, that we don't separate our kids and pit them against each other by having one group wear a mask and another group not, or having our parents have to lie to say that they took a shot or they didn't take a shot, just so that they don't have to mask their child. So that's a concern of mine. And then last, I want to talk and thank Stephanie for coming forward. I've always thought that our fields ought to be open and equitable for our students to be able to participate in. Because you as parents and our students, we've paid a lot of tax dollars for these facilities. And it ought to be open to everyone. Thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Who'd like to go next? Stacy?
Yep, just briefly, want to thank the speakers, especially Dorian. It takes a lot of courage to talk to the board, so thank you. And just a quick well wish to both Terry and Margaret. And I couldn't have said what Kathy said better about both of you. You'll be missed. And best of luck in where your new adventures take you.
Okay, Lisa?
Thank you, Terry, for everything and happy retirement. And thanks, Kathy, for speaking about Margaret Crespo. I actually hadn't realized this was our last night together. So we will be sad to lose you and eager to hear about all you're doing. Thanks, Dorian, for your comments. I have been paying close attention to the conversations around the incidents you mentioned. And I'm really glad that you called tonight to share your story and your perspective. I also wanted to take a minute to thank Alicia Graves and the NAACP for the support that they've been giving our district and our students around these issues. Also appreciate Stephanie Smith calling tonight. And I was glad to get your email and hear that Renee Williams and Community Schools are working with you on a resolution. And then finally, we just had a work session with our Equity Council. I hope most folks on this call were also able to join us then. I just want to take a moment to thank each and every member of the Equity Council for the incredible amount of time, thoughtfulness, and hard work they put into our district this year. A couple of weeks ago, we had our last Equity Council meeting of the year. And it was fantastic to see so many of your faces in person. And I also finally wanted to thank Rob Anderson for coming to that last meeting and speaking from the heart about the importance of the work that the Equity Council is doing. It was really meaningful to hear from you. And I know that our Equity Council values deeply your support and your, you know, ongoing leadership around these issues.
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, I did all every, every comment that everybody made. But I also want to thank Dorian for being brave and bringing your story to the board meeting. And I think your voice is extremely important, as well as all the other youth voices that we've heard today. So thank you again, Dorian. You know, I would like to see if we can't get our board to acknowledge the fact that our property here and properties elsewhere, our cities, they're all sitting in the grounds of our Native Americans that were, that their land was brutally taken many years ago. So I would like to figure out a way where we can acknowledge that at every one of our board meetings. And Terry, thank you for an excellent job you did with the BVA. And Margaret, adios. Que tengas una buena aventura en la vida.
Well, like Richard, I'd like to ditto everything everybody said. Margaret, we're going to miss you. Terry, we're going to miss you and wish you both just the best in your future ventures. Want to thank Dorian, who was brave enough to speak to us and share the experience of having to do assignments that belittled who she was. So that was very brave to say. Thank you for that. And I too am really excited about the Equity Council because it looks like we are going to be making changes and we're not just talking about it. And that's, that's very exciting to me. And I want to acknowledge that this was one heck of a year. And we got through it and just hoping that next year is better and that nothing nasty comes up to surprise us. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll also thank our speakers and echo a lot of what's already been said. Thank you, Terry and Margaret, for all of your work and especially your work in helping us navigate this year. I know you are both invaluable and I deeply appreciate your role. And I also just wanted to bring up something, just a little tangential. The, I just read about a case that the Supreme Court's going to hear about a cheerleader who was removed from a cheerleading squad because of comments she made on social media. I think it's a really interesting freedom of speech case and one that we should look at because I think all of our students, not all of them, but a vast majority, participate in social media and may not always participate perfectly and may not make some good decisions. And it's interesting to see someone's sports participation be impacted by their Instagram or whatever it was activity. So I will be watching that over the summer and understanding what that's all about. So our next items are, yes?
Just if people want to know more about that case, the National School Boards Association filed an amicus brief on it. And if you go to their website, they addressed it today in depth. There's a lot of really good information about why the Supreme Court took it and what the possible implications would be. So if anyone wants to know more about it, you could just log into the National School Boards Association website.
See, I didn't even need to read the article. I just needed to ask Kathy. I'm not even going to bother next time, Lisa.
We're allowed to comment on each other's comments. I can't remember.
Well, not really. I mean, it's better not to.
Oh, okay. Well, let me say independently then that it occurs to me that a land acknowledgement sounds like a fantastic idea. And I hope that we can have that conversation in August. And I appreciate the idea coming to me.
Okay. And a way to follow up with that would be to then bring it into agenda setting. Because then it gets put onto our list and we keep a record of that.
I wasn't sure if we were doing that with our last meeting of the, before our board break, if we were.
Yes, we're still going to be doing that, so.
Cool.
Okay. All right, so our next item is the legislative update, recognizing that the legislative session is ending or has ended. I can't remember. Kathy, do you want to kick us off?
Just as I took a bite of cookie, sorry. There are a couple of late bills that I'll just talk about really briefly. There is going to be most likely a ballot measure to lower, seemed to be talked about taxes a lot tonight, so people will be falling asleep. But anyway, a bill to lower the assessment rate across all classes of property that would have about a billion-dollar impact on the budget. And while that would be an impact on schools, we do get backfill from the state. It'd probably just result in an increase of the negative factor because depending on how the state's doing, I'm not sure they could afford to backfill. But it could be really, really awful to special districts that rely on local property taxes for their funding, like library and fire districts. So what the legislature is trying to do is to limit the impact of that, to bring the impact down from about $1 billion to a couple hundred million dollars. So that's a bill that's trying to work its way right now through the legislature that I think we should all pay attention to. And I think it is kind of throwing in the towel and hoping that maybe that measure won't pass because in a year where assessed values have gone up so much and people are seeing their increases in property taxes, I can't imagine lots of people voting no on lowering their property taxes. So it's a creative way. Some of the people who are against it just want to be more true to the whole issue of what are we doing and this is just a temporary fix to it. But I think it's an interesting temporary fix. Then there's going to be an interim committee on school finance. I don't know, I was trying to ask Bill how many there have been. I think I've been to at least four or five. And I may be old, but I'm not that old. They do them quite frequently. And the last one met for three years and didn't come up with a single bill. This one, that several of the charges are, one is to look at how we account for poverty. And at every interim committee I've gone to, we've looked at how do we account for poverty? And we always end up with the same, looking at free and reduced lunch count because of the ease of counting and the ease of administration. So we'll see what happens when they're going to hire a consultant to give us advice on that. They're going to be looking at some other tangential issues like special education, not how much should we spend and should we spend more on special education, but a very technical issue around it. So it'll be interesting to see. They have five meetings this year. I am not optimistic that they'll come up with anything, but you never know. So those are the main things, I think, that impact us right now. So thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I just want to report back to the board. We did pass a resolution supporting SB 21199. That's gone through and it's gone through the House and the Senate. And it'll soon hit the governor's desk for signature. So that means that we'll be, or we have repealed the two really hatred laws that were passed in 2006.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then we can go to our next item, which are revisions to board policy exhibit IJOC-E, volunteer application. And just a reminder that it's only for the main policy that we study it and then adopt it. For regulations and for exhibits, we're just given notice by the district. Obviously, we can have feedback, but that's the, that's the process that we've agreed on in our policy. So Kristin, thank you for joining us. Can I start with a question? Do we still require a background check for our volunteers? Rob?
I didn't know if you're talking to Kristin.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes, yes, I believe so. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and we still have a workaround for people who might be undocumented but want to participate in our schools? Yeah, okay. Any other questions about the revisions to the exhibit? Okay, great. Then we can go to the next, which is revisions to board policy regulations JDDA-R, student abuse of alcohol and other drugs.
And Board President Marquez, are you looking to me to provide some information on that? I'm really sorry if you weren't paying attention.
That's completely fine. We did great on the first one, but why don't you tell us about this one?
Sure. So I'm actually filling in tonight because council had an emergency. So I have limited involvement with this. My understanding is that there's been significant evaluation internally to bring changes, not only to the policy, but also to the regulation to make it more restorative and less punitive. That is what you see in front of you, is the work of that group. And beyond that, I'm afraid I don't have much more expertise in what the specific changes were, apart from what you see on the paper.
Okay, and just a reminder, we've already made some changes to other policies. And I think this follows and reflects that, if I have that.
That is correct.
Yeah. So board members, did you have any questions or comments about these changes? Yes, Kitty?
I don't have a question, but just a comment is that I'm really glad we're doing this. And I think this is going to be best for our students in terms of helping them instead of punishing them.
I wholeheartedly agree. So I think it's great. And we can see how these go. We have some very different policies. And I think to echo what Landon and Amy Nelson in our Equity Council said, we take a learning stand. So if we find they need to be tweaked, we can tweak them, and that would be great. Okay, so then our next item are action items, consent grouping. Is all the board members okay to continue? Great. All right, so 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, May 25, 2021, Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, May 25, 2021, Regular Meeting, 7.4, 2021, 2020-21, Additional Budget Appropriation, 7.5, 2021-22, Cash Management, 7.6, Approval of Horizons K-3 Charter Renewal Contract, 7.7, Approval of Superintendent's Contract for 2021-2022, 7.8, Approval of Superintendent's Evaluation, 7.9, COVID Pandemic Stipend, 7.10, Dreambox Math Agreement Renewal, 7.11, Joint Use Agreement between BVSD and the City of Boulder for the use of recreational fields and facilities, 7.12, Resolution 2117, Instruction for the 2021-2022 School Year, 7.13, Grant Career and Technical Education, CTE, Concurrent Enrollment and Innovation, Colorado Department of Education 21, 7.14, Grant Boulder Universal Projects Serve U.S. Department of Education 21, 7.15, Grant Federal Programs, Consolidated Federal Programs, Titles 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4 to Colorado Department of Education 21, 7.16, Grant Information Technology State Connecting Colorado Students, Grant Number 2, Colorado Department of Education 21, 7.17, Grant Special Education School-to-Work Program, SWOP, Colorado Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, 21, 7.18, Grant Superintendent SRTU, Colorado Department of Education 21, 7.19, Grant Superintendent SRTU Elementary and Secondary Education Relief, Colorado Department of Education 20. Okay, are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, hearing none. Can we get a motion to improve the items? It's a move by Kitty, seconded by Stacy. Laura, sorry. Okay, questions? Kathy?
I just have a couple of questions. Like, I was hoping Rob could talk about 7.9, the stipend, because I'm not sure we've talked about that a lot publicly. And I think it's a way for us to pay recognition to our employees for getting through a very challenging year. So if you could just do a brief description of what we're doing that we were not able to do, obviously, under budget conditions of last year, but when we got the money from the state and the federal government, how we are trying to thank some of, all of our employees. I think it's available to every employee that was actually employed in the district at the time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kathy, for the opportunity. And just so for the, for, to kind of build upon what Kathy said, in lieu of the wage increases for 2020, the 2021 school year in regards to, we'll be offering a one-time payment of 1% based on an employee's regular wages earned during this past school year, plus $500 for every school employee that's nontemporary or nonsubstitute employee. And this payment will be in a separate check distributed in July 2021. And board, this is for your approval as a way to really recognize each and every BVSD employee for all that they did over this past school year to really help us make it through what was incredibly difficult year.
And then 7.12, the resolution. I just think it bears some attention to the, we're planning ahead in case we do have to go into remote learning again in the fall. I'm hoping that we don't have to, that we already, Tina's glaring at me. I don't know, Rob, if you have anything you want to add about the resolution and why we need to do it. I think there's some requirements from the State Department about what we need to do if we go remote. And we have to have our own guidance as to what happens if we go remote and how that's going to be handled. So I just think it makes sense to talk about that in advance.
Absolutely. And the important piece to this and why we're bringing it to you, bringing it forward, it's a state requirement. But also, we need to make sure that we're including preschool because in the event that we have some kids that are in preschool that decide to do go fully remote, that we would have to have that in there. So in talking to Kathleen prior to the meeting, that was, that was the big piece on why we had to bring this forward. It was really to make sure that we're supporting our students that may choose to do the preschool remotely next year.
I also want to use this opportunity to talk about 7.7 and 7.8 to say thank you, Rob, for your guidance through this year. It is, it has been a heck of a year, but I've never seen you with anything but a positive outlook, even when probably all were feeling a little bit down in the dumps. And so I just want to say thank you for your guidance and your leadership. And I'm looking forward to a less pandemic year and to being able to work harder on our strategic plan and community schools and all of the good work that you're already starting us down on that road for. So I just wanted to say thank you on that. And then I just had a quick question for 7.18 and 7.19 on SRTU. Is that because SRTU funds haven't been released yet, Bill? Is that why we don't have anything? And do we know, do we have a timing? We'll look at that in August, I'm guessing? Well, the next time we're meeting, though, is August, so then we'll get in. At least I think. Tina would kill me if I suggested we were meeting between now and then. So we'll get an update in August. So those are all the questions I had on the, on the consent agenda. Thanks, Tina.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? I had a question or just a comment about 7.6, the Horizons contract. So my understanding is that we're approving the contract as it is written here. And if Horizons accepts the insurance model for ELL, if there are any changes, then that will have to go back to the board. Is that how this works?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that because this is sort of an interesting thing where we are approving this contract, but it hasn't been fully approved by both parties. Is that?
That's correct. My understanding is the Horizons Board is also meeting tonight. So we should have clarity after tonight. And if we're not having a meeting of the minds, we'll be back in August to discuss.
And I'll just make a note also to commend the Horizons Board for adding a weighted open enrollment preference for free and reduced lunch students, which was something that Summit Charter School has also done. There are the two of our charter schools. There are the two of our charter schools that do that, along with some of our choice schools, University Hill, BCSIS, High Peaks, and Community Montessori all have preferences for our FRL students to encourage all of our students to apply to our choice schools, so. And the other piece, I also wanted to just comment on the superintendent evaluation and the contract. So every year, we evaluate the superintendent. We go through the year, at the beginning of the year, we meet and we set goals and talk about where we're headed. And then we check in a few months later in December and see how it's going, and we communicate a lot in this process. And then a couple of months ago, we started the evaluation process where we solicit feedback from board members. And then we come up with a letter, which you see published here. And I just thought I'd read one passage out of the letter so the public can understand where we are. We wrote, "This year has asked more of you and more of our district than can ever be fully understood. We all know how incredibly hard you have worked to make this year a success, to retain our incredible staff and to give our students the best year possible despite the circumstances. Somehow, no matter how many new burdens are thrown at you, you have continued to bear the load. I don't know how you have managed it. I am incredibly proud of the work you have done, our district has done, and our staff has done this year. Thank you for everything." And that's not I, me, that was another board member who wrote this. So we put it in the letter because we thought it did such a nice job expressing our appreciation for the superintendent and for our staff. So I just wanted to highlight that part of the evaluation. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes, yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item are action items, and we did something a little bit different this year with our different contracts with our labor groups. So usually, we put them on consent, I think, and this this time, we wanted to allow for more discussion so the public understands why we're supportive of these negotiations of these contracts or even excited about them. And so that's why we are doing the form differently. I'm not sure how many people know that we're doing the form differently, but we are. So we'll start with the first one, which is 8.2 Ratification of Negotiated Agreement Between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Classified Association Affiliated with the Colorado Education Association and the National Education Association. Okay. So, any questions about this contract? And just, do you want to give an overview? I see. I don't see much, my glasses are on. It's my cradle, I think. There we go.
So, President Marquis, members of the Board, Dr. Anderson, it is a pleasure to speak with you about the TA, the tentative agreement that we reached with our classified staff. This was done through a collaboration of trust and relationships with this group. This this group represents the custodians, our transportation, our maintenance, and food service. So with this process, we were able to go through our interests. We laid down the norms about how we wanted to operate, and we laid down the interests. The interests then became the story. And of course, the story does tell us exactly what the issue is, and it defines it much better for us to understand. And so we were able then to collaborate on solutions. And so what you see before you are changes within the contract, a couple MOUs around salary and schedule, and it turned out to be really, really good for the betterment of the district. And I really want to compliment Rick Berry, the president of the the association. His leadership was very inspirational and outstanding. And I also want to do a shout out to Rob Price, who our operations assistant superintendent, was also involved with these these sessions and did an outstanding job of getting all of us to come together and conclude with a great contract and a great way of moving forward. And one little note, the first time since I've been here, this is the first time we've actually been able to settle and have a contract before before you to vote on with this group. So it's really turned out well. I'm so proud of this group and these employees. And I have to tell you that with these employees, I know Rob Price would attest, during this pandemic that we went through, these people really stepped up. These people really stepped up and helped us. They did other jobs they did not normally do. We kept them whole, they appreciated that. And it was so nice to see the the climate and the morale of this group take on other jobs that they are not used to doing and did it well.
Thank you, I forgot to make a motion. So, yeah, could someone make a motion to approve? Thank you, but thank you, Stacy. Thank you very much for talking about the process around this contract. Any questions about this particular contract? Yeah, Kitty?
Yeah, I don't have a question, just a comment, because this year, I was able to, well, participate through Zoom with two of the meetings, and I was really impressed with how it works. And I'm impressed generally with how we work collaboratively with our unions rather than in an adversarial way. And contrary to what one camera columnist thinks, the collaborative Patty's laughing back there. The collaborative way of working together, I think, is much more productive. So I'm proud of us and I'm proud of our unions.
All right, any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, Laura, would you please call the roll on the motion to accept this contract?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is the ratification of the negotiated agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Education Association. Do I have a motion to approve this, or ratify this? So Kitty and Stacy?
Hey, President Marquis, members of the Board, Dr. Anderson, again, I am so pleased to give you the the new contract for the BVEA and BVSD. And I do have Terry Mulford, our outgoing president that we'll miss very much, and our new president, Patty Delgado, who would like to say a few words in regard to this new contract.
Good evening, everyone. Since one of the action items was ratification of the contract for BVEA, Patty and I wanted to make a statement tonight to the Board. And we are going to do this in tandem, where Patty's going to make this statement first in Spanish, and then I will make this statement after Patty in English. I'll turn it over to Patty.
Muchas gracias, buenas noches, President Marquis, miembros del Consejo Educativo, y Dr. Anderson. Estamos aquí esta noche para agradecerles su participación en las negociaciones de nuestro contrato. Como ustedes saben, en febrero del 2012 se estableció un proceso de consenso a través de un empeño mutuo para establecer un nuevo, productivo y confiable transcurso de consenso. Las negociaciones usando este proceso fueron muy exitosas en el 2012, en el 2015, y en el 2018, siempre usando el mismo proceso. Este proceso ha funcionado muy bien en los últimos nueve años y nos ha permitido tener una alianza colaborativa entre BVEA, BVSD, y con ustedes, el Consejo Educativo. Estamos enormemente agradecidos por el tiempo que ustedes dedicaron desde febrero a mayo de este año en todas las reuniones de negociaciones. También queremos agradecerles a ustedes, al distrito, y especialmente al Dr. Anderson por su colaboración durante todo este año escolar sin precedente, que desafió a nuestros docentes, a nuestra comunidad, y a nuestros estudiantes. Durante todo este año permanecimos unidos y continuaremos trabajando juntos para que nuestro distrito siga siempre siendo exitoso para todos nuestros estudiantes. Gracias.
Good evening, President Marquis, Board of Education members, and Dr. Anderson. We are here this evening to thank you for your participation in our contract negotiations this spring. As we know, through a joint commitment to build a new, productive, and trust-based process of negotiations, an independently facilitated consensus-driven process was launched in February 2012. Negotiations using the consensus process were successful in 2012 as we negotiated a three-year agreement, and again in 2015 and 2018, using the consensus process each time. Consensus-based negotiations have worked very well the past nine years and have allowed for an excellent partnership and collaboration between BVEA, BVSD, and you, the Board of Education. We deeply appreciate your time and commitment from February through May this year during our large group negotiation sessions and during some subcommittee meetings as well. We would also like to thank you, the Board, the District, and especially you, Dr. Anderson, for your collaboration throughout this unprecedented school year that challenged our educators, our community, and our students. We remained unified as a district throughout the entire school year, and we expect that BVSD will become an even stronger district for all of our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Board members, any comments? Kathy?
Two quick comments. When we started the negotiations, Rob decided we needed to change the preamble, which I thought was a little odd. But I have to tell you that it was really a good exercise, and I just want to read one paragraph because it fits with what we were talking about all of this board meeting about being culturally responsive and trying to do our equity work. And I think framing the agreement around this with this language is was really a great idea. So if you'll allow me just to read the one sentence. "We know that students are more successful when they see themselves at the front of their classroom. Teachers in Boulder Valley School District will provide culturally responsive teaching and honor the dignity of their students, and therefore, it is our goal to promote the hiring and retaining of teachers of color who represent the students that they teach." So just thank you for all of us pulling together with that language. I think it was a really helpful way to start framing it. There's other great language in the preamble, but I wasn't going to read all that. And then I had one question, Rob, which is, can you talk about MTSS? It's kind of addressed in here as being a gen ed issue as opposed to necessarily a special ed issue. I know we're trying to continue to improve our services around providing services to those students with disabilities or those students who are struggling, so maybe you could talk just for a second about the MTSS piece?
I certainly can. I think that in this agreement, we've agreed to work collaboratively with BVEA as we start to build that out and define that. And with the idea that we know that we need to have a system of supports for all kids in general education. It's not just a special education. You know, a kid struggles, and then they're automatically going into special education or other services. We want to make sure that we provide all kids a least restrictive environment, which is in their classroom, and we want to provide all kids the supports they need through a multi-tiered system of supports, which is what MTSS supports. So we look forward to collaborating over the course of the next year to really better define that and make sure that we have the supports and resources needed for all kids.
Can you just talk a little bit about what that looks like when you're working with teachers and special providers and everybody who kind of comes into what that MTSS means?
I can, I can try to try to give a brief, it's a pretty complicated concept. I mean, the idea is that we all come together, that if a if a student is struggling in a classroom, right, that we're providing the instructional infrastructure and supports for teachers to say, hey, I know a kid is struggling. Here are some resources that I can have as a general education instructor. Here are the additional resources that we could provide for the school to provide those students. I'm not sure if I'm getting ready.
The reason that I'm asking the question is I think many of us, and we heard some of it today, are concerned about the social, emotional well-being of our students when they come back after a pandemic and surviving a pandemic. And I think MTSS is one of the ways that we, I think, will have as a tool to help those students and teachers address those needs. So maybe if I framed it around that, that's kind of what I'm hoping we can see MTSS helping us with. Does that help?
It does. And I mean, the big idea is that making sure that we provide our teachers with the supports and resources, that we work together to make sure that all the students have the supports they need, both socially, emotionally, and academically. And that's whether through counseling services, whether through our own counselors, whether it's through our resources with mental health partners. You know, as as you approve the budget this evening, you're considering approving the budget. We know that we have many of those resources that are built in with that budget. Are they going to help with that support? How do we provide teachers and schools the training supports and resources to make sure that every kid has a great experience? And that's really at the core of MTSS. But you're right, Kathy, to your point, it's about socially, emotionally, making sure everybody's okay. We're making sure we're caring for the well-being of our kids academically as also and just emotionally.
I just wanted to express my appreciation to Rob and Mike and to the BVEA for the way you integrated the Board into these negotiations. It was just incredibly useful, and I know everybody was willing to answer questions and talk through the different things that we discussed. I feel like I have an extremely firm grasp on everything in this contract, and that's entirely due to the way that we we made that work. So thank you so much for letting us be there and be part of that process.
I'll just make one comment too about my experience. I think this is my third negotiation somehow, I don't know how, but I think it is. And I think some people have a misconception about negotiations with staff, that they're primarily a conflict around pay, and that's the core of the conversation. What really struck me this year, even more than the other years, was how much the concerns were centered on the ability of the teachers to be able to serve their students. That was truly the core and the driving force behind the conversations. And it's always a difficult conversation when a teacher's asking for more supports, and you're trying to to say, well, we can't do that this year, but let's create a task force to create those supports in the next year when more funding comes. So I just wanted to, it's just just clarify how strongly this negotiation was about how to best support students. And it was, it really came out loud this year. And thank you both for coming here. I think it was helpful to hear from all three of you as we signed this important agreement, which will be in effect for three years. But we do have opener language in our contract. If the climate changes, that we can open the contract and make changes, especially if we're not serving our students. We can, we can do that. So thank you so much. All right, so with that, I guess we can call the vote.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is the ratification of negotiated agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Educational Office Professionals. Do we have a motion to approve? Okay, Richard. Richard and Kitty, okay. Mike, do you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, thank you. Again, it's my pleasure to give you the the contract that's been TA'd by the Office Professionals in BVSD. This is a fascinating group of individuals who work extremely hard and are very, very conscientious about what they want and what they ask for. But it's, again, it's those conditions that we want to create for them to make a better workplace. A couple of things that you should note in there is that one of the things that came up in this negotiations was they were concerned because, as you know, our employees in BVSD, we retain very well. We have lots of employees who have been here for many, many years. Our Office Professionals are example of that. There's vacation payout that you probably saw in there. That was an issue that came up. They were actually looking out for the district in terms of the finances. That's how that's how conscientious and how good this group is, because it was going to cost the district tons of money to pay out everybody for vacation. out everybody for vacation like we normally have. Those people, there are like six individuals who have well over 300 and something hours of vacation, but we would have to pay that out. So they want us to settle with that, and then they want to go back and say, look, we can only get 168. If we get over that, it's accrued. You only get paid out by those hours that you accrue over the 168. So that's just one example of a group of people that really was looking out for the district financials. And then, of course, this was done also through a collaboration. We have worked with the Office Professionals in the same way. It's, it's really a trusting relationship. We don't have to have an outside facilitator at all. They're very, very willing to come to the table, and we talk about what those issues might be, but they're an excellent group. I want to compliment Christine Burkholtz, the president, who has served well, and her leadership has been outstanding. So I give you that, and I, that's what I have, and if there's any questions.
Okay, questions on this contract? Kathy?
Can you talk a little about needing to update the market analysis and kind of the work that still needs to be done going forward?
Yes, thank you, Board Member Gethardt. We, we actually have already settled that. It came out today. There wasn't an error in the two jobs, two jobs that were described in the, in the contract. And again, the other thing too is, as we all know, the philosophy around the 75th percentile is something we've done in Boulder Valley School District since I've been here, and we still adhere to that. So what we're doing is, we've actually have changed even the schedule a little bit, the salary schedule, to reflect more of that, and they appreciate that because it keeps them, it keeps, it's a retention tool to keep our employees and our Office Professionals working. So yes, the 75th percentile with a margin of a negative or a positive five with the mid-range of the salaries that we, or the districts we compare throughout Colorado, the 10 districts.
I think many of us in the room may know what you're talking about, but if people are listening, you might want to explain the 70% really quickly.
The 75th percentile, meaning that we are 75% better than other districts in terms of our pay. So that makes it much better for people to retain, and this is one of the reasons we have a great retention rate, because the compensation's good.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gethardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zeth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our final contract is the, or item is the ratification of the negotiated agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Para-Educator Association.
Yes. Again, pleased, very pleased that we were able to come to agreement with the paraeducators' contract. Extraordinary group, extraordinary group of people with, I would call, the sessions around the three Cs: critical conversation, critical challenge, but also compassion. Lots of, and I think a couple of you were probably in, tuning in on some of those, and we were able to get through a lot of that. Now, the challenge here was that we did it virtually, and we had a federal mediator that actually facilitated, and she did an excellent job of keeping us on, keeping us on task and keeping us rolling. So what you have is a couple of MOUs that we're, we're paying attention to, especially around safety. I think that's a critical component for our intensive paras, and we definitely want to pay attention to that. And I think the, the second thing that we listened to and we heard loud and clear, and we acknowledged that, is that they need to have a voice. They need to have a voice, and when it comes to decisions around special education children, they need to have access to the IEP. They need to know what the plan is, and they need to have input on how resources are going to be spent. So I think this was something that we were able to come up with an MOU and get, and get real resolution. And to President Marcus, your point, it's all about the kids. They were all about the kids in this. We did do one thing in terms of a schedule, a salary schedule. We now have a 14-step schedule for them. It was nine steps. It's at 14, and the first step, it starts at $15 an hour. So that was a real, that was a real win for all of us.
Okay, did I forget to make a motion? Okay, thanks. All right. And so that's Kitty and Stacy. Thank you. We heard a lot from our paraeducators, and it's wonderful to hear that we found a place that we could move forward with. Questions about the paraeducator? Lisa?
I just wanted to say thank you to BVPA as well for also extending invitation to the Board to sit in and witness. I was able to make it to one of the sessions and definitely learned a great deal.
I just have two quick questions. So the salary schedule, adding the steps, is honoring those para professionals or paraeducators who stay with us longer too. Was that part of the intent of doing that?
Yes.
So that it's part of the retention?
Yes.
So maybe you could just explain that really quickly?
It allows, and we had a nine-step, we had a nine-step salary where you stopped, where you were kind of frozen, and now with a 14-step, they're able to grow with more compensation. And this is something that we started to talk about pre-pandemic but didn't get the opportunity, so we were able to finish that.
And then there is some interesting language in one of the MOUs about looking at practices of other states and trying to learn best practices. Can you just talk a little about that, how that will, information will then flow back, and maybe if there's any kind of reporting back to the Board about what best practices are to help us with MTSS and all that? I just think it could be an interesting learning opportunity.
Yes. And I think that is, that is something that was brought up by both parties. What are other districts doing that's in best practice that we can actually use within, within the intensive paras around CPI training, which we're starting to do already? So this will be something that, yes, we'll, we'll research it. We'll be glad to do that. And now with, with Nativity Miller under that leadership, we'll be able to use her skills and also get some information for them, as we can then report back to the Board later, if you'd like, and knowing what that is and what that looks like.
Thanks.
Okay, other questions? Kitty?
It's not a question. I just want to correct the record. This was the negotiation I was observed, not declassified, so.
Okay. And I guess, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I want to really recognize also Lisa Larson, the association president. She's a, she's superb, a joy to work with. So, but anyway, I just wanted to give her that acknowledgement. Thank you.
Great. Any other thoughts or comments? Okay, Laura? Donna?
Donna.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Donna.
Yeah, I want to say I'm glad to see this contract go through or to be presented and negotiated like this. Having been, having worked in the district with many, many of our paras, including the intensive, I have an inside insight, and I know how hard they work, and we could not run our special ed programs without many of these paras. They're, they're just over the top, in my opinion, of what they do, and I'm glad to see that we are honoring them with this contract and able to solidify something that helps them in their career path, as well as it just helps the regular classroom teachers, and which is another reason why I think it's important that someone's on the Board that really has been involved in the inner workings of the school district and in the classroom. So I'm glad to see that this, this is taking place. Thanks.
Kathy?
I just want to echo what you said, Mike, that the little bit that I was able to observe, I agree with you that the mediator was doing an excellent job. There were some tense moments, and she never lost her cool. She was, she was great. I mean, that's her job, but it was just nice to see. And also, I was, I really have a lot of respect for Lisa Larson in having, you know, navigating through that, because I have to say, when I left the negotiations, I thought, well, we're never going to get through all of this, and the next thing I heard is it was all resolved. So thank you.
All right. So should we call the roll on this one?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gethardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zeth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is the adoption of the 2021-22 budget. I need a motion to approve. By Kitty, second by Kathy. Okay, let's call the roll. No, just kidding. Okay. So do you want to, are you presenting, Bill? No, nothing, nothing. Okay. All right. Well, we have been looking at this budget for a really long time. It's been all year. There have been some changes. So the impacts to the budget, we're very familiar what they are. These contracts have a lot to do with it, so it's great that we did these in sequence. Any questions or comments about the budget? Kathy?
Shocking, I know. Sorry. I'll be quick. Just a couple of things that I want the public to be aware of is that we still have a negative factor, and it's $20 million this year, and the cumulative impact of that has been $330 million to our budget. So as thankful as we are for the federal stimulus money and the rebounding economy, we still have a $20 million just to us negative factor and a $570 million negative factor roughly for the state. And the other concern that I have, and maybe Bill can talk a little about this. It's funny, it came up when I was at the dentist of all places, so you can't really respond, which might be why it came up. But I think we're, and I brought this up before, is that we're in a declining enrollment, and I think we're going to have to get used to our budget not always growing, because so much of our budget is driven by enrollment. And so my dentist was worried about how many kids were going to be in an elementary school class, and, you know, and we're hearing that from some of the emails that we're getting. And so I just was wondering, Bill, if you could just talk for a second about the impact of declining enrollment on our budget. I know we've put more money into staffing reserves, which is what I tried to say with a mouthful of equipment, that we do look at the, how the classes shape out in August and September, and we put a fair amount of money in to try to equalize that, because we can't really predict the future. So maybe if you could just talk about those two things really quickly?
Yeah, absolutely. So certainly for, going on a decade now, we have made attempts to not radically impact classrooms and students in the fall sort of process. And we've done that with those staffing reserves, the, you know, using one-time dollars to be able to fund those positions for the continuation of the year. And then when we go through the next budget cycle in the following year, it allows us to sort of reset to the standard staffing allocations. It is challenging, there's no question, at school. Sometimes it'll feel like there's a reduction in staff or something like that, because essentially the school's been overstaffed for a year, but we didn't want to impact the school in that existing year and move teachers around and students and whatnot. So that combination of utilizing our one-time resources to be able to do that, the averaging in the School Finance Act formula, which softens the blow with districts that are in declining enrollment, kind of, you know, allows it a little bit of a glide path as you are declining. It's no question that it becomes challenging over multiple years to make those adjustments that occur when you have lost a significant, significant number of students. And this is happening to districts up and down the front range and, and even across the country. So it's not like this is particularly unique to us. The, the cost of housing, you know, is a front-range problem, and just families having fewer kids in general. So it'll be a challenge into the future.
And then the legislature hasn't even really given us the runs for how the school finance is going to work. So I just want the Board and the, and the public to understand that we will be coming back and revisiting this, because so many things could change between now and August and September. And you always do a good job, Bill, of letting us know kind of where we are and how things are changing. So I'm supportive of doing it today, but I don't want people to think that this is the last that we'll hear of this year's or next year's budget, because so many things will change going forward. Is that an accurate statement?
Absolutely. You know, we have two months' worth of finalizing this current year. We're, we're into August, and we're still collecting revenues that are applicable to the 2021 fiscal year. So, you know, we're, we're months away from even knowing exactly what our ending balance is in the current year that roll forward into next year. Student counts, obviously, how students come in over the summer and enroll, and where they enroll, and making those adjustments in August and September. So there's, there's always work that gets done in the beginning of the school year, and then that's what the revised budget process really is for, is to take into account all those changes. You know, we have a really high confidence level with the School Finance Act, where it stands right now. What's been proposed will likely increase just a little bit revenues to the district. So it's not like it was last year, when there were significant unknowns going into the, the adoption of the budget and the finalization of the state budget. So definitely will be adjusting, making adjustments, as we always do with a revised budget.
And what's different this year is the legislature's meeting well into June, and usually they have to end the first week of May, so we don't have the runs. We don't know exactly what our funding's going to be, but we, we know within a small margin of error what it's going to be. And what I'd like people to know is that for the first time, we're funding, we're actually getting funding from the state for reduced lunch kids. And I remember, indulge myself for a second, it was the first piece of legislation I ever tried to run back in the early 2000s. Couldn't get anyone to testify in favor of it. And finally, we're doing this. It's, I think it's a huge step towards equity to be, we used to count free and reduced, but we wouldn't fund it. And so kudos to the legislature for actually stepping up and trying to add some equity to our formula, and so I think we'll see a little bit of money, as you said, Bill, for, for that. So I just wanted to shout out to the legislature for trying to address some of the issues that have been longstanding issues in our school finance formula. So thanks, Bill.
Okay, and I, I'm, yes?
Oh, I just wanted, Kathy, for the public listening who may not know what the negative factor is, wondered if you would want to tell them? Or Bill can.
So the negative factor was implemented in 2009, 2010, so over a decade ago, as a mechanism to reduce the funding put into K-12 education. It was tested at the, in the courts and found to be, I don't know about appropriate, but at least allowable to be a, truly a negative factor. It's called the Budget Stabilization Factor. They've kind of changed the name a couple of times. But it's, again, a mechanism to, on a equal percentage basis, reduce funding to every district in the state. And it was 572 million last year. It ballooned to over a billion this year, and then it's back down to that 572 million for next year. So it was improved significantly going into next year, but there's still a, a big reduction in funding for K-12.
And the only thing I'll add to that is the money I talked about earlier that's coming in from the increasing mills is supposed to go to paying down that negative factor over the next 20 years. I think they gave themselves a long runway.
Will you be able to provide, either during the summer or in the fall, some kind of recap of ESER funds by category?
Absolutely. So as the grant application that was in here, there's quite a bit of detail that goes into that. So for ESER I and ESER II, and then ESER III is, there's a significant amount of detail and work that goes into making this application into the state. CDE has to approve them, so it's a, it's a complicated and long process, and there's rules and requirements that we've talked about before. But certainly, as those have been expended on particular items over the past year, and what we're planning to do going forward, we'll absolutely report out on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Other questions? Donna, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one concern. Due to a family memorial that I was unable to attend the last board meeting, I did write an RFI, but I also watched the video and the presentation on the budget. But my concern is, we have a new budget ongoing line- But, um, my concern is we have a new budget ongoing, uh, line item, which has to do with our safety and security, uh, for our schools. And I, I realize from looking at the budget that we've got 11 staff members that we're going to hire for this place. And, and in watching the video and the slide presentation, and also the answer to my RFI, I realized there's a lot of unanswered questions on how this plan is, is going to look. Some questions are answered, but there's a lot of unanswered questions as far as, do we know if 11 is too much? Is 11 too many? And realizing before that we did not have this expense and now we have an expense total cumulative of over 3 million that, that goes i- into our district, which I feel in replacing SROs will somewhat take, uh, y- you know, will cost, that money's not going to go towards, uh, actually in the classroom or reducing classroom sizes. So what I want to say is, as far as the budget goes, how will we know if this is enough? If it's too much? Do we back off? It's an ongoing expense with declining enrollment. Will we, um, will we be able to look at this each year and make adjustments accordingly? And do we know that this year, that this is enough to, uh, secure our schools?
Yeah, Donna, thanks for bringing that up. And it was unfortunate you weren't able to join us because I think, um, from my perspective, a lot of those questions were answered, and I appreciate that you watched the video. Um, I think one of the things that I really like about this approach on school safety and why it's worth the investment, actually, there are a couple of things, but the first is that it switches just from safety to really working with the store, the students on restorative justice. So instead of, um, and, and I actually did appreciate the work of our SROs as well, but I feel that we'll get, um, even more out of these new positions that will create more, um, student interaction and more student relationships, a student-focused, um, approach. The other piece is that we weren't paying for our SROs, but we were going to have to anyway. And I think this is really important for the community to know. We, um, we were getting free SROs, more or less, and correct me when I get wrong, and we were going to be charged for them. So we, it's not a full added expense. We're actually, it's, it's kind of an offset, so we had to choose which direction to go. Um, so I'm really comfortable with this. And I also have just been, and I think we said it in our evaluation, just the, the approach that Dr. Anderson has is to, um, try something, make it, see what works well, um, you know, switch it around. I'll, I guess I'll quote Landon again, but it's this learning stance attitude that I feel that we really as, as a district have embraced. So I would fully expect with this and any of our other initiatives that we will make tweaks and adjustments. I don't have any doubt about that, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board.
To me, it's not about necessarily the appropriateness of, of, uh, getting rid of the SROs. It's about, do, do we know, uh, there were a lot of unanswered questions, and I, I saw them on the video. I did watch it. I did send an RFI. There's still some unanswered questions. So the concern is when we're approving the budget, is this enough or is it too much?
Well, my personal opinion, and I, for some reason, we just have a really different perspective, which is wonderful, and why I love diversity and voice on a board. Um, but I felt that this was a really good approach to this solution, and we'll continue to adjust it as we need it. So I, um, any board, other board members want to chime in?
It seems to me it's the number that was recommended by the professionals on our staff who we tasked with making a decision. And I'm sure that as we move into the next year and we get accustomed to this new setup, that if additional changes need to be made, our professional staff will recommend them.
I also appreciate how it dovetails nicely with our changes to our discipline policy and the kind of our refocus on how we're trying to deal with, with, um, students who may be just students and be adolescents and do things that they do. And so I, um, I, I agree with you, Tina. I'm supportive of the changes. At first I was nervous because my experience had been that SROs, um, weren't scary, but I also have to appreciate that my children were not the children who would necessarily feel that way in a school. So I'm really excited about this work and I support it, and I look forward to hearing how it gets implemented.
Great. Stacy?
Um, to answer the question about evaluating whether it's enough or too much, just like any other program that we start, we continually look at what's going on and we make adjustments as needed. So I'm fully confident that if it's not enough, we will add. If it's too much, we'll take back and then reevaluate after the first school year. So I'm confident that our plan is good going forward.
Okay. Any other budget questions? All right, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Um, our next action item is the cancellation of the June 22nd, 2021 board meeting. My favorite action item. Stacy, did you make a motion? Okay. A second, by Kitty. And for the public, it's not uncommon for us to cancel the June 22nd meeting. Not only does it give board members a break, but actually every time the board has a meeting, we do congregate a lot of staff. Our staff need to go rest now after this year. So, um, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our next item, our Policy Action Consent Grouping. These are policies that we discussed in the last couple of weeks. 9.1, Adoption of Board Policy Revisions BEAA Electronic Participation in School Board Meetings. 9.2, Adoption of Board Policy Revisions BEDB Agenda. 9.3, Adoption of Board Policy Revisions ECB Buildings and Grounds Maintenance and Operation. 9.4, Adoption of Board Policy Revisions JDDA Student Abuse of Alcohol and Other Drugs. 9.5, Adoption of Board Policy Revisions JLCD Administering Medication to Students. Are there any policy board, policies board members would like to pull? Okay. Hearing none. Could I get a motion to?
Tina?
Yes, Donna?
I'd like to make, um, yeah, I'd like to pull or either make a comment on 9.2.
Okay. So you need to choose what you want to do. Do you want to pull or do you want to let us make a? Pull?
Yes, pull.
Okay. So we'll pull 9.2? Okay. And does anyone want to make a motion to approve the remaining policy items?
Kathy?
Yes. Do we have a second? Richard? Okay. All right. Um, okay, first let's ask questions or have clarification about the group of policies that, um, with the exception of 9.2. Any comments or questions?
Which one is 9.2?
Adoption of Board Policy Revisions BEDB, the agenda. Okay. So let's call the roll on the items not including 9.2.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now we need a motion to, um, adopt Board Policy Revision BEDB. Thank you, Richard. Seconded by Kathy. Okay, Donna, would you like to talk about BEDB?
Yeah, I, I would just like to add after, um, just add at the regularly scheduled agenda planning meeting, after the word "board members" in the first paragraph.
Donna, I don't know. Could you tell me where, the first paragraph, which line?
At the first paragraph, I guess you would say the third line if you're looking at the exact thing. It says, "After consultation with the other board members," and I would add, "at a regularly scheduled agenda planning, planning meeting." Because to me, it, it seems like it could be after, you know, a, a quick phone call, a text that you don't get a response on, uh, it's just, when is that? And, and no one may agree with me, which is usually my opinion on the board, but, but I, I think I represent a lot of people with this concern. Um, that would be what I would recommend to just be added for clarification.
Right. So we don't have agenda meetings. So what we do is have, we have an agenda section of our regular board meeting and, um, mm-hmm. Go ahead, Donna.
Agenda planning meeting. You know, where, where, where we sit there and, and prioritization.
The prioritization. So that's a, yeah, I probably would not agree with that language, and not just to be contrarian, but, um, this applies to the whole agenda, not just for the prioritization items, which are a specific subset. So, um, in general, we can put on agenda items a variety of way, of ways, and I think the flexibility in this language is appropriate. Um, the addition of the prioritization meetings, I think, have been helpful, but I wouldn't put it into policy.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to bring it up because consultation is just, is so vague to me. It's like, oh, I tried to call her. Oh, I text her. I, I told her that this was going to happen, or I told him, or I told they that this was going to happen. But, uh, it, it just kind of leaves it out there hanging. But that's my opinion, and I know I'm one of six, but that's okay.
One of seven. All right, okay.
No, I, I meant, I'm usually the dissenting one, but.
Oh, right. Okay. Gotcha.
I, I do represent a community of people, and that is what several people have read into it, saying, when would this be? So I, I, I just wanted to point that out, and I know that, uh, that, that will be, uh, dropped real soon. So thank you.
Okay. You bet. Um, all right. Any other questions or comments around policy BEDB? And this is something we've struggled with, whether we should have a really strict agenda planning meeting. Um, we, I have tried to keep it more open and keep it in public meetings so that people, all board members can have some input. That has been, uh, an important goal of mine. So I hope to continue that. But, um, anyway, Laura, would you please call the roll on this?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. And then our next item is the Temporary Authorization of Board Policy Revisions DID Property Accounting. Kathy?
Go ahead.
Uh, so I need a motion to approve by Lisa, seconded by Richard. Um, and Kathy or Rob, do you want to talk about this?
And, and Bill, um, if we have any specifics, we may ask him to come to, to speak to this. Uh, this is a change that we're asking to make. I'm really aligned to, um, uh, board policy in regards to property accounting, um, just capitalized assets, um, and, and increasing the threshold, uh, for what's recorded in the financials as an asset. Uh, the reason this is important now is because as we're implementing our new ERP system, we have to set the ERP system up in a way that makes sense. And so it would be more of a change order if we tried to bring this back later. Uh, we feel like this makes a lot of sense. It came to, um, the audit committee and was approved, um, and so we're recommending this change.
Okay. Questions, board members? No? Okay. Um, Laura, would you please call the roll to approve this, um, temporary authorization?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. And then the next steps when we do a temporary authorization is it'll be put back, back on study and then we'll approve it the next time, just so everyone knows how the process works in this case. So it is unusual that we've done this, and notably, we've done it twice this year. So, okay. The next is, is agenda setting appropriately. Um, and I, I think we had one thought around, yeah?
Yeah. Since you explained to me how to do it, I, I appreciate what Richard shared earlier. I think for some folks, land acknowledgement may not be something they're familiar with, but I think for many of us, especially in social services and human services, it's pretty common practice. And I love Richard's suggestion, and I hope when we come back in August, we can talk about whether that's something we'd like to do and where we might put it.
Okay.
I've seen some really good language at the, at CU and the School of Education around that, so maybe we don't even need to invent it out of whole cloth. We could look at some of that language because I was really impressed with some of the ways they start their meetings and the way they talk about that. So happy to try to dig that up and send it out.
Okay. Um, I, and I just wanted to add on to agenda setting, um, to talk about our school closure process. So it's, I'm reading a lot about schools closing all over Colorado. And, um, and just to, to be very mindful that any kind of school closure we do, that parents are notified before the open enrollment window. So that would kind of put us out until November. So, uh, that would be my agenda item. Kitty?
And I, I'd like to say that I'm hoping that the sooner the better parents can know what to expect in the fall regarding our policies on, um, safety precautions, masks, vaccines, et cetera, the better. Uh, many parents are trying to decide whether, where they will enroll or what they will do with their children. So I know that, uh, our district, Rob, has made an announcement like mid-July, but parents are really pushing and asking me constantly for, uh, sooner. But I, I just want to add that it's not agenda setting necessarily, but a comment.
Okay. Kitty? Yeah, and this, I don't know how much of this would be included in the Equity Council and how much wouldn't, but talking about, um, say, having a graduation requirement of ethnic studies or critical race theory or something like that. I know at the NSBA conference a few months ago, they were talking about a, a state that did that, that added that as a graduation requirement. And, um, I just think it would gel with what, um, what the F, excuse me, the Equity Council's doing.
Okay. Um, and then, Stacy, you and I were talking about, um, whether volunteer service, we should look at when volunteer service is required to be in a, um, National Honor Society or which requirements are necessary that, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I was, um, I was just talking about National Honor Society generally, and each high school, it seems to me, sets their own requirements. They're all different. Um, and some of them, um, I think all of them probably require volunteer service. Um, some of them require a certain number of AP classes, which I think, um, advanced or AP or IB classes. And I think that that discounts a whole bunch of students who get really good grades that can't be in National Honor Society. Um, so I was hoping that we could discuss that at some point.
Right. And I think, um, we were talking about how volunteer service isn't feasible for some low-income students who need to work for their, in their free time or, or provide childcare to their families. And just understand, making sure that there are flexible pathways to getting into an honor society.
Right. There, there are a lot of barriers, it seems to me, to be in National Honor Society.
All right. Okay. Well, with that, I really wish you all a great summer and hope that you rest. And again, thank you for all your hard work. This was a tough year.
A shout out to Andrew and his team for their exemplary work, making sure all of our students have computers, all of our students were connected. That was a tremendous amount of work, and most districts didn't do that. So I just want to give you a great big attaboy.
All right. So thank you. Meeting adjourned. [applause]